Good morning and hafadeh. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, Housing is now called to order. Today is Thursday, October 13. The time is now 9:01. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, October 7, and then on October 11. Again, today is Thursday, October 13, 9:01. The bill that we'll be entertaining this morning is Bill Number 332-36 LS introduced by Senator James Moynihan, co-sponsored by Senator Chris Duaneus, Senator Frank Blas, and Senator Tony Ada. An act to add a new Article 13 to Chapter 77, Title 12 Guam Code annotated relative to a public-private partnership for the rehabilitation improvements of the football fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation. Fiscal note for Bill 332-36 was requested on August 29, and it was received and disseminated to all senators. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 332-36 were invited to the panel. They are: we have Mr. Mr. Abatang, Mr. Westling, we have Ms. Mel Mindiola from GIDEA, and we have Buzz Sharoma. And also Cameron, Cameron Sharoma. Okay, I want to make sure I don't murder your name, okay? Just let me know if it's pronounced wrong. Okay, the general rule for this public hearing, written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, but we'll allow sufficient time for you to speak. All right? Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony once you're done. Please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning, and I have Senator Jim Moynihan, who's the author of the bill, and Senator Taylor Tidaway. I'd like to ask Senator Moynihan to give his opening statement, and we will now begin the testimony immediately after his statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to the panel. Thank you for joining us here today. Mr. Chairman, Bill 332-36 is also co-sponsored by Senator Christopher Duaneus, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Tony, Tony Ada. Mr. Chairman, Bill 332-36 is a simple measure. It simply proposes a public-private partnership to repair and rehabilitate the five football fields being utilized by the Guam National Youth Football Federation. This is a process which has been proven to be effective and has repaired other community-based infrastructures, such as Harmon Industrial Park Road, the Tejan Gym, and has recently been proposed for the Guam National Basketball Team and Tennis Federation. Nearly 1,000 youths of Guam participate in the Guam National Youth Football Federation, and there are many concerns with these fields, from issues with lighting to poor conditions of the field and even safety. So we know something needs to be done, and the government of Guam has financial challenges. And even with the influx of federal funds, the reality is that these fields are not a priority. This is why I introduce the legislation, so that we can prioritize. Youth football has been proven to improve child's character, establish discipline, build lasting friendships and memories. It's great for a child's health and, in many cases, provides the option for a young mind to keep them from making bad decisions. This legislation is a win-win for many, but most importantly, the children. I would like to thank those who have joined us this morning to discuss this important piece of legislation. And now I'd like to pass it back to Mr. Chairman, so that we can hear from them, the experts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. I'd like to also recognize my colleague, Senator Brown, has joined us also this morning. And also on the panel, we have Mr. Bland. And we'll begin with Ms. Mel Mindiola from GIDEA to give the first testimony, and then we'll move to Mr. Sharoma from Dedidu, because we're all from Dedidu. Thank you, Ms. Mindiola.
Hafadeh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Happy to break the ice for these gentlemen here today. Hafadeh, Chairman and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 332-36. GIDEA supports the bill's intent to provide a mechanism for the rehabilitation and improvements of the football fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation. However, we would suggest certain points to consider as the bill continues its way through the legislative process. Number one, historically, our role in tax credit programs has been to administer the review and approval of the respective supporting documents and issue the tax credit memorandums. GIDEA does not traditionally approve any use plans or rehabilitation plans for the various tax credit projects, as GIDEA is not the beneficiary of the tax credits. We recommend that any and all references to GIDEA with regard to its participation in approving at the start any rehabilitation and improvement plans be removed from the bill. Second, based on past experience, tax credit programs are most successful when the entity that is going to benefit most from the tax credit projects takes an active lead in the program. We suggest that the bill be adjusted to clearly identify the Guam National Youth Football Federation as having full jurisdiction and delegated authority with regards to the drafting of rehabilitation plans, as well as procurement and administrative requirements to avoid confusion among the parties involved. You know, and to kind of just sum that up, what we, what, we saw mention of the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Mayor's Council of Guam. What you don't want is a situation where the mayor does this procurement, DPR does this procurement, because then you get caught up in certain procurement technicalities which have been identified in the past. Some agencies are not comfortable issuing a procurement based on a tax credit, and generally a nonprofit is okay. And we can provide, GIDEA generally does provide the procurement guidance to the nonprofit organization, because they're expected to follow government-regulated procurement. And so we do issue the guidance prior to them going out and procuring the service. And then from there, the, as long as the documents are in accordance with what was stated in the law, and the procurement was done in accordance with the law, then the tax credit can then be issued to the company that is sponsoring the project. And this is just a personal, as I was going through the bill, not something that GIDEA, really affects GIDEA's part of it, but to qualify on page three, line 16, it says, "To qualify for the tax credits, the GNYFF shall not charge an individual an entrance fee to enter." This is not something that we've seen, that I've seen, in other tax credits. And also, as a suggestion, perhaps GNYFF shall not utilize any entrance charges towards rehabilitation, meaning you want to, you want to, you don't want double counting to occur. You don't want them, you don't want the organization collecting money and then using, saying, "I'm using it for rehabilitation," when, when there's tax credits for the rehabilitation. But at the same time, teams incur a lot of costs associated with running a sports youth football program, transportation costs, equipment costs, and the wear and tear of things that have nothing to do with the actual field itself. And so I don't necessarily think that that line, if you're, if the intent of the line is to say, "We don't want double counting," then I think that can be articulated somehow in the, in the legislation, that double counting, if you get funding from other sources, sponsorships, et cetera, shall not be applied towards this. But to take away methods of an organization to generate income, you know, I think that that might be worth double questioning, considering, reconsidering. But that's, like I said, it's not really a GIDEA thing that affects GIDEA, just something that we, we noticed and wanted to, to give some feedback on. But that's pretty much what we have. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact us at the Guam Economic Development Authority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mindiola. Mr. Sharoma.
Thank you very much. My name is Buzz Sharoma, and I work at Townhouse Furniture. So just to grace, just to let you know that if you need a discount on some of the furniture, I'm available. Just come to me first. I'd like to start first by just, you know, my dad has been gone for the last 20 years. So really, the family has picked up on maintaining the football field. And I can tell you, it's, it's grueling, and it's difficult to continue, because the funding is dependent on private donors, and we don't have the money to keep funding it. I'll just, I think the best thing I can do is just, let me just grace you with what we go through, the challenges as far as expenses in maintaining the House Angels football field in Dedidu. Okay, here are the challenges of maintaining a football field, because it's not cheap. But let me just go, the first one is field maintenance. It's constant. It's bush cutting and mowing. And oftentimes, it's the coaches, as well as the parents, who are donating their time to do that. But that's our part. The second thing is painting. There's a lot of vandalism, so we need to buy paint, and we're getting it donated also, and we're painting the buildings, the press box. The next one is security for continuous vandalism. You know, it gets expensive after a while, but the field is unprotected. We can't afford to have security there, but these are the things we're looking at. Damage to bathrooms, the first thing they do is they damage the toilets and the sink. Damage to metal doors, they're just jamming the doors. Damage to cyclone fencing, they're cutting the fences so they can get in, so they can, they can steal some of the equipment and steal some of the, all the helmets, the shoulder pads, the pads. I don't know what they need it for, because they're not playing, but yet they're, they're Maintenance of electrical system for lights. We're one of the few fields that have lights. The lights need maintenance. Some of them are burning out, and they're very expensive to run. Just to run four hours, five hours, you're looking at $400 to $500 a night. So it is very expensive. The other thing we're looking at is we're looking at replacing the existing lights to LED lights, because there's cost savings in the power. Yeah, we don't even want to lease out the field with the lights, because people can't afford it. Other organizations can't afford it. Repair aluminum bleachers. We have these bleachers that were donated by the Baragada Mayor's Council. They donated these aluminum, but the very front part, the lowest part, is up about five feet, so you can't even sit on the bleachers. They're there, but you, you got to climb up, but nobody climbs up there. Everybody just puts their pop-up tents, and, and then they're, they're sitting on, on the ground level. The other thing, too, is irrigation expense for drainage. We're always experiencing with the rains, the field is muddy. It's not good when it rains a lot, because it destroys the field when the kids play on the field. And so this is what we go through, and it's kind of hard, because our, our family is, is putting up with all these, and we're doing a lot on our own, and I can't keep doing that. I'm getting older. So hopefully, I'm depending on you just to help us out with the funding, funding on maintaining the football field. Everything else, we can, we'll put in the time and the energy to make it work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak before I ask my colleagues to ask questions? I know you're all football players, so go for it, if not part of the ground meetings.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Senators. My name is Andrew Abatang. I represent the Guam Packers Youth Football Organization. We're here to support the bill. We would also like to make a recommendation. The recommendation is that this bill include the teams within the GNYFF league without a legitimate game field, but a depleted practice field. We would like to be included in this bill as a means to improve and/or modernize our practice field. Our aim is to eventually improve our practice field to a state where hosting a game is an option. Another consideration would be to allow this bill to help organizations without a field develop one suitable and safe for its players. Our organization have been, has been practicing at the Whistick Park for many years under dire conditions. We have made the best of what we have to this point, but really could use some help. The field has areas where exposed concrete exists, where structures used to be and are no, no longer there. There are many areas in the field where exposed rocks and broken glass present a danger to the kids. The lack of parking forces our parents to park across the street where our kids have to cross a busy roadway. We try to mitigate this by putting cones up, but still poses a hazard. The field is unlevel and contributed to numerous injuries over the years that we've been practicing there. And unlike the other fields, we don't have any lights. We have one single street light that is kind of posted there, and it illuminates about 50 by 50 feet, and we have over 100 players in that organization. I'd like to add, by considering this, by considering this, we will potentially have more fields available for football games. This will lessen the usage of the existing fields, thereby minimizing the wear and tear on those fields. Lastly, I'd like to point out that these fields aren't exclusively used for football. They are shared with other sporting organizations so effectively. This bill would impact a larger community beyond our football teams. And so with that said, we plead and we ask for your help to push this bill in and include the other teams that don't have legitimate fields. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hafadeh, my name is Ryan Westling. I'm speaking on behalf of the Eagles organization. I thank you for this opportunity for, to speak on behalf of this bill and to support it. The Eagle field is a landmark within Mingilau. Right now, we understand that the governor has intentions, the current governor has intentions to take the field away to build a hospital, but in the time that we have and the time that it takes to appropriate the funds and build a hospital, there are going to be hundreds of children that will be affected if our field currently does not get the support that it needs. The safety of the children is the paramount matter on which I am here speaking. The children are playing on derelict fields with cascal surrounded by grass that poses a threat to their health. While we are there to promote health, healthy living, good sportsmanship, the fields are not in place where the kids can actually get the support that they need. So we ask for your support. We thank you for this opportunity, Senators, and we ask that you continue to help support the kids.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bland, I think you're next. I see you grabbing the mic.
Hafadeh, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Senators, for allowing us to come and share some of our views on this bill. First off, my name is Alan Bland. I'm the president of the Tamooning Steelers Youth Football Organization. I'm also the vice president of the GNYFF and a longtime coach, not only in football, but also in baseball. Through the years, I've noticed that every village has a baseball field, just about every village. Not every village has a football field, and I think now that the sport has, is starting to thrive and the interest is growing, I think it's, it's only fitting that we, we start to start, look at better playing, practicing, and conditions all around for our, for our youth football players. With that said, our league started out in its first year with only four teams, and now that we've grown to nine teams, we, we service over 1,000 kids, depending on, from season to season. So with 1,000 kids running through our programs, we not only see them through the youth, we follow them through high school and onto college. So the sport is thriving, and the kids are doing well. But imagine what we can do if we give them the right type of playing field for practice and games, where they, where their potential can be taken. So in allowing this bill to push through, it would, it would really benefit not just the GNYFF, but as my colleagues have said, it would help the entire island of Guam, not only in football, but also other sports if need be. In closing, I'd like to say that, you know, the, the work that all of the coaches, parents, volunteers, and staff have done throughout the years will continue to happen, but with this bill, it will only allow us to concentrate our efforts more on the kids and the safety of the kids as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bland. I think you forgot to mention you were a player, right? You mentioned that earlier. He was, he was running around in the fields that were dangerous while he was in the guard in active duty. So he had a medical recovery in stage. Senator Tidaway, do you have any questions you want to pose on the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, but most especially, good morning to those who make a difference in our community in raising our children, to give them an option to go and be healthy, most especially, and to be good kids. I think in any sport, you know, I'm a jock myself, you, you learn discipline, you know, and Mr. Sharoma, I mean, you're a legend in your own time, you know, and thank you for all those years that you've been guiding our youth. I greatly appreciate it. I know your family very well. But tax credits is just another way of appropriating funds, and it's a concern that I have, considering what would happen in the last budget. We basically spent money that we didn't even have audited yet, and at the end of the budget bill, it almost became zero, with issues still, you know, luring our government with regards to Medicaid payments that we may not have, and, you know, to, to cover the remaining of FY23. We've got issues left and right that we have to address that hasn't been addressed. So tax credit, though it's subtle, is just another way of appropriating money, and this is going to be a problem. I was just thinking about this bill this morning, because I'm one that would greatly want to advance our athletics here on Guam, in every field of athletics. I know last week I was off-island, so I apologize, Mr. Chair. I was off-island last week, and I, but I did review every single public hearing, one for a tax credit for the tennis courts, and I'm sure you're aware of that. So put it this way, if that tennis court gets through, then this most likely will get through, too. But we have to be realistic. There might not be any funding available to give any tax credits out, and I'm glad, like I said this morning, I woke up thinking of another public hearing that we had where Mel was present, and I asked the question on what are the current standings of obligations in tax credits, and she's right on, you know, right on note and providing us a list of Mel, I'm going to have you go ahead and, well, first I have a question as we go through this list. Inactive, and just for the listening audience as well as yours, because I, I don't know if, can we get a copy for the panel so they can actually see what's going on? Because the one thing I don't want to do is give you false promise. We shouldn't be here giving you a tax credit. We should be here giving you an appropriation. That way, you know you're going to get the money. You're not going to be reliant on someone, a business coming in to provide you funding. The government's going to assist you. That's where I'd rather go than the tax credits, because this lingers, and it doesn't always give you what you guys are looking for, and that is the support needed to build, to build from there. So Mel, back to the, this diagram, it shows the public law, you know, that other tax credits that were given, the expiration date, the program amount, cap, disbursement, current balance, status, transfer purpose, BPT tax, all the different types of taxes, et cetera, down the line. And it's two pages. There is a section here where it says "status." Mel, as we go down this, inactive, can you explain, does that mean that there, there's no, this has died? It's no longer available? Is that what inactive means?
Thank you, thank you for that question, Senator. For GIDEA, inactive means there's been no communication with GIDEA in some time concerning any plans to utilize the tax credit.
I see. So it's still basically active, but nothing's moving at this point?
That was correct. I believe in the previous administration, there was a report put out by the public auditor recommending that inactive tax credits be examined and potentially repealed.
Okay, so those who are here testifying today, that's, that's what that means. So that's why I'm saying that, you know, tax credits versus just an appropriation, you know, you're guaranteed to get that appropriation, not a tax credit where you're crossing your fingers, that you hope you get this funding needed. So the next question I have, just in simplest, for simplicity reasons, the total amount yearly, now, we know that, you know, accumulated throughout the years, you know, like this, this amount that, the $2 million, I think it is, for five years, right? Okay. Let's talk about yearly. FY23, coming up in FY23, forget FY20, let's go '22. We're, we're, no, because we're already in '23 right now, but let's talk about '23, because there's prior year that we also obligate. Question, when we go to another fiscal year, does that mean the opportunity for that individual group will no longer be available? For instance, if, if the Football Association has five years, and each year you get $600,000, and FY22 has ended, does that mean that stops them, they're no longer available on that $600,000 for that first year?
Um, I, it really depends on, on how the law is written, because if it's authorizing $1 million per year, then that means if, and if it's authorizing $1 million per year with no carryover language, then, then technically, yes. Anything not presented within the fiscal year would not be, you could not be utilized within that fiscal year. So let's say, for example, you have a delay with procuring a contractor, and the contractor is only able to do $200,000 of work, but you have $1 million authorized. When you present the invoice, you're looking at $200,000 and $800,000 that's still on the table for fiscal '23, that unless there's a carryover provision or something in the law that says unused balances may be carried over, but in any given year, no more than, that's, it really just depends on the language of the law.
So is it normally used, that language is used for tax credits, to have a carryover?
Tax credits historically have not been structured in such a way that it's a drawdown of a million per year. That's a very recent occurrence, and only like the last, I want to say, the last two or three tax credit legislation that's come through, out of the 35th and, yeah, both in the 35th. I think the medical equipment one, proffered by Senator Shelton, was a, was a, an annual appropriation, or I'm sorry, an annual amount, and then the, I think that's actually the only one I can think of, because the Basketball Confederation does allow for carryover of unused balances, so it's really more of a balancing act with them telling us how much
they're going to be using.
They're going to be using. But I believe the purpose of the structure has to do with the, because it's a double-edged sword. You, do you treat, if You, do you treat, if you're, if it's a $5 million tax credit that's available the whole five years, then every year, you're considering it a $5 million credit on potentially collectible taxes, right? But if it's only $1 million per year, then it's $1 million. You can also, I mean, there's, I think, one of, a good way to address this might be to say, rather than $1 million, $1 million, $1 million, $1 million, maybe there is some work done with the Guam Youth Football, so one of the comments we made was that the Guam Youth Football Confeder, the Guam Youth Football Group should control the program, this program, and they can talk among themselves, create a budget and a timeline associated with that budget. That way, there's a point in time that maybe the first year, it's a lot of planning and architecture, design work that's not $1 million, maybe it's $200,000. And then the next year, that's when all of the work gets done, and that's where we have the lion's share of the credit authorized, and then the third and fourth year is just residual. You could potentially articulate something like that, or in any given year, no more than 2.5 million shall, amounts shall be carried over, but in, amounts can be carried over, but in any given year, no more than $2.5 million authorized. You could do something like that. It really depends on what you're trying to address.
Well, it's a matter of being able to capture the full amount that this bill is required, you know, asking for, you know, and not losing out because there was nobody available to avail of these tax credits or provide the support needed for the Football Association, so it becomes very difficult. Can you tell us now, on a yearly basis, not the aggregate of everything, but just on the yearly basis, how much tax credits are out there floating every year?
Certainly. All public laws that are active, there are, there have been a total of $29.7 million authorized. There have been $17.8 million drawn down, so active tax credits, well, rather, I'm sorry, the amount that's still available to be drawn down on totals $11.9 million. The $11.9 million, however, is inclusive of, 2.1, 3.1, approximately $3.3 million worth of, so $11.9 minus 3.3, 3.3 are the inactive tax credits. So if there was a law to repeal inactive tax credits, I would reduce the $11.9 by 3.3, meaning at this point in time, approximately 7.7, no, $11.9 minus 3.3, right?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, around $7 million, $8 million.
Seven, 7.6 million? Yeah, 7.6 million. And of the 7.6 million, I don't, I don't believe we have, out of the 7.6 million, I think the only one structured, year by year, I believe, like I said, is PL 2035-138, which is the medical equipment tax credit, and that has not been utilized through FY22. And I don't believe there's a carryover type of provision on this one.
So you're looking about yearly $7 million, $7.6 million a year that we have to ensure that our budget does not appropriate because we have all these tax credits. Now with this bill, right, is that correct? That's what I'm getting at, you know, the money that we have to put aside every budget bill to accommodate those tax credits that were passed. That's what I'm looking for, the yearly.
So if, speaking to planning for fiscal '23, yes, I would say you should plan for, you should plan for a rainy day in the event that all of these things come to pass and approximately 7 or 0.8, close to $8 million are available for tax, for these tax, to accommodate these tax credits. These tax credits also affect different areas of taxes, so there's unplugged BPT excise tax. I think that's it, actually, unplugged BPT and excise. But with regard to adding this to the aggregate, it really, I think, will depend on how quickly the drawdowns on the remaining will occur. And I, another example I will cite is Public Law 33-191, which is the Harmon Industrial Park roadway project.
Right.
That was a $3 million tax credit wherein $2.2 million was dispersed, with leaving a balance of $800,000. And I haven't seen a whole lot as far, I don't know if the work, to me, I think the road looks good, and so it's unclear to me what I think would be a better gauge is, at the beginning of the fiscal year, to look at this report that GITA has, and then to look at what's inactive, remove, take those off the table for planning perspective, as well as to ask, of course, for an update, when GITA asks for updates, they'll say, oh, we're still working, you know, we're still working on it. But if you put something in the law that they have an expiration date to utilize it, then you don't have to ask for updates seven years after the fact, or 10 years or 20 years after the fact. It would just expire. So that's a good way to sunset inactive tax credits, is just to have expiration dates associated with these. So I wouldn't say, I guess to answer your question, and I'm sorry, it's kind of long-winded, Senator, to answer your question, yes, if I were planning for fiscal '23, I would consider 7.8 million on the table. However, if I'm planning for fiscal '24, I would look at this list one more time, and I'd remove anything that's not active. I'd also look at anything that has expired, and in the future, what you'd want to see is something declining. At this juncture, though, if the $7 million or 10, let's say, with this tax credit, if you said, we're going to authorize $500,000 for fiscal '23, 1.5 for fiscal '24, and so on and so forth, 500 plus 8, 7.8 is 8.3 million as a total, as a percentage of the total government operating budget, I don't know how, I think that's where you have to kind of consider, in your analysis, what is materially, what is materially affecting the government of Guam budget? If the government of Guam budget is, and I am not the budget expert, but if the government of Guam budget is $250 million, 10% of that is 25 million, right? 5% of that is 12.5 million. This, with all these tax credits, is still less than 5%, maybe 3%, right? And so I'd say, I'm comfortable with 3%. I'm not comfortable with 5, or 10, or 15. And that's how you prevent too many special interest tax credits from coming to the table. That's how I would approach it during the time of evaluation, ma'am.
I totally understand where you're coming from, but here's the problem, you're taking a number like $250 million, and you're expecting that it's going to be there to do the percentage cut. But what if that $250 million is not even there? The revenue is not brought into the government of Guam in the first place. I mean, we're in an artificial economy right now. We have been for the last two years with all this federal funding coming in. I would just rather see money being appropriated to the Guam Football Association to provide what you need to fix your fields, to provide the security there, rather than a tax credit that you may not even get within this year. And last question I have, Mr. Chair, and thank you for indulging me on this, because I think it's very important. If this bill were to go through, does it allow them the ability to carry over to the following year, to avail themselves of the full amount of the $3 million, correct?
What, why don't we just, it's on the bill, it identifies
Does it allow, Mr. Chair, if you mind, I'm asking the GITA, if her interpretation of this bill, it does, does this allow for the, to be carried over to the following year in the event that the money was not able to be acquired in that year? In your interpretation?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. In my interpretation, on page six, it authorizes $500,000 year one, in two, three, four, and five, $375,000 in tax credits, $400,000 in excise tax for anyone within the five years. And so, to answer, for the first, for item number one on page six, for the first year, up to $500,000 in tax credit shall be authorized. The second point on line number four, for two, three, four, five, for $375,000. For those two items, I don't see a carryover. For the third item, I do see the ability to carry over, because the tax credit can be issued at any time. And then there is, of course, the extension provision to extend or modify, but the Football Federation would need to come back to the legislature for those authorizations. So I would, I would put in a carryover provision, because, you know, just things just don't always happen according to schedule. I would put in a carryover, I think that's realistic. I think that's prudent.
Well, thank you so much, Mel, and I do have a concern also with pumping in money into an area like the Eagles Field right now and determining what's going to happen. I mean, I don't want to see our football, you know, our kids playing football right next to a missile system in Manila, because that's what the comments that were made from DOD, that they plan on using that area for a missile defense system. Can you imagine, playing, our kids playing right next to that? So, you know, we really need to look this over thoroughly and, but also provide what you really need. I mean, I know the need is there, and it goes a long way with helping our children. But I'd like to be realistic about this, too, at the same time, and really help you guys, so. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you, everyone, for all the good work you're doing in our community. I greatly appreciate it, and it's not overseen. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titegwe. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all of you who've come this morning to provide your testimony on this bill. And I certainly understand the favorable testimony for those of you representing these organizations that you have, but I also share the concern that Senator Telo Titegwe has just relayed. This process of giving these tax credits, and I was there back then when the whole issue of the Raceway Park, I mean, if it wasn't for tax credits, probably the Raceway Park would never have been built, and there was a lot of controversy back then as well, because what we're doing through this process is we're telling private businesses, well, you can pay your taxes to the government of Guam, or you can pay your taxes to these tax credits, which means that this is money that's not going to be available for other critical needs in our government. And, you know, I wish I could always be the one to say, no problem, you got my support, because I think the work that you do is very important. I have a young child who's full of energy, is probably going to be a future player for you. But at the same time, I'm concerned. I'm concerned, not with any of the work you're doing, because I think it's exceptional, but I'm concerned about the fiscal status of our government and our ability to continue to pay the obligations that we have. This government has grown an awful lot in the last two years. You wouldn't think that would be the result of the pandemic, but that's what's happened. There's been more hiring, there's been more obligations. The recent report, which is disturbing to hear, that we're going to shut down one of our schools because the school has not been properly maintained or may have structural issues and maintenance issues that require an entire school to be shut down. And who's going to pay for that? You know, I was there at DPW, and we did the reconstruction of JFK, and I look at the amount of debt service we pay every year, and we will be paying for another 30-plus years, because I think it's a 40-year agreement. You know, when you're talking 10, 15 million a year, automatically, that's taken off the table to pay these long-term obligations. That's less money every year to actually pay for other obligations of the government. And we, government pays for an awful lot. A lot of, you know, nonprofit organizations are dependent upon the government of Guam and the money that's being given out, even credits that GITA is, you know, through our QC program. There's a whole list of entities that receive that funding that, again, is revenue coming into the government that's dispersed. But in my concern, and I'll tell you, because I, you know, and I did not vote for this last budget, this billion-dollar budget, and I've been in the legislature when we had less than half a mil, you know, $500 million, $480 million, and in the time I've been gone, this government has almost doubled in cost. And I don't know how the taxpayers of Guam are going to continue to pay for it, quite frankly. That's my concern. My concern is measuring this, and I'm not saying this is not important, because I'll tell you, with all the challenges our young people are going through, you know, they need a positive outlet, and you guys provide that positive outlet. But it's how do we balance that with the needs of making sure a classroom is safe or paying a teacher? I mean, that's the challenge that, you know, unfortunately, for those of us that are on this side of the aisle, have to make the decision. The popular decision is to go ahead and vote for this, and whatever happens, we'll deal with it then. The odds are, my colleagues will probably do that. Is that the right thing to do? I don't think so at this time, because I don't know where we're heading. I do know there are a lot of businesses that have closed down. I do know there are a lot of businesses out there that are struggling. I do know, in my own immediate existence, I've had two people that have run businesses on this island that have shut those businesses down and moved their family off island in the last seven months. That's my reality of which I look at the world, and it's easy, any one of us, trust me, could have introduced this bill and any other bill to do a tax credit, because we're not making the decision on the budget, because if we had to make this decision on the budget, it'd be very difficult, because we have GMH that's leaking and not where it needs to be, and other critical needs at the hospital that are not currently and have not been addressed. So we actually had to put this in the budget. I don't know what my colleagues would do. That'd be a tough decision. Doing this, it's not a tough decision, because they're just saying, oh, we'll just make sure that, you know, we'll just do this, the money never gets there, and it's never on the table to make that decision. Because I can only ask my colleague, why didn't you introduce this in the budget? We did $200,000 for, I think, the Basketball Association. I don't know why the Basketball Association got the appropriation and no one else did. So colleagues, that's a tough part. Most of my colleagues will want to do the popular thing, might not be the right thing, but heck, you know, we're a few weeks before an election. Let's call it for what it is. And I hate to be in this position, because someone's got to be responsible for how we manage the finances of our government. I'm not saying what you do is not important, and I don't support it, because I do, trust me, with the drug issue and the challenges we have, we definitely need positive outlets. But is this the mechanism to do it through tax credits? Because I was here for the $600,000 last week with the Tennis Federation, so we should give Tennis Federation $600,000, we should give you $2 million, and any other, you know, the list is long. Who else do we not give? And how do we fund the rest of the government that we're, you know, we're all going out saying, we're worried about educate, right now, public safety, the lists go, oh my goodness, we're so worried about that. But what are we funding for that? How are we funding the Guam Police Department to add on additional resources to protect what our people are seeing is most critical? It's in the news every day. I know you experience it, we experience it. So what do I fund? Do I fund that, or do I fund this? So that's where our challenge is, and I'll tell you, this legislature spends money like it's going out of style, and it's going to come home to roost. It's no different doing government financing than our own personal financing. You know, when you got to make decisions about, you know, what do I prioritize, you know, paying my mortgage, paying my power bill, paying my, you know, car payment, maybe I don't have as many dinners out with the family anymore, because I got to give that up. Maybe I'm not buying other things that I would like to have, but are not necessities for my family. And that's where we're at. I'm very concerned about where we're heading. I mean, it's only experience that makes me think twice, because I've seen where we've been, and I've been here during harder times, and I really believe harder times are coming ahead of us. I guess I shouldn't be saying that, because if I'm running for office, it's not a good thing to say. But I don't want to, I don't want to be dishonest in my perspective, it's just, maybe it's just mine, but that's how I see things, and I'm very concerned. You know, I've heard our chairman make public statements now to encourage his colleagues not to do any more appropriations. And I'm sure, Mr. Chair, I'm not, you know, if I'm speaking out of step or not saying a proper statement that I'm attributing to you, then let me know, but that's what I heard. And this is no different. And it's not saying, is there another mechanism we can use? Is there a smaller amount over a period of time that we can accommodate so we can still, hopefully, get you to your objective? But, you know, am I willing to go into the legis, you know, to session in a week and a half and appropriate another $2.6 million, which just, you know, with the hearing last week and this bill that my colleagues introduced, that's what it's totally. So that's the challenge that I'm putting out there. I'm trying to be as upfront as what my concern is with the fiscal responsibility of our government, because we're not entering into good times. Once the election's over, and once the shields are lifted, and once the reality comes to roost, the picture's not going to be too pretty entering into 2024 and 2025. And yes, even with the increased military spending, we don't have anywhere near our tourism industry where it needs to be to even pay for the government we had two years ago. I don't know how it's going to pay for the government we have now. So if I'm going to look at how do we make payroll, which was a standard of every two weeks in the government of Guam, that's a challenge we have, and I hope there's a better way that we can address this, but I think there needs to be a more upfront and direct way of dealing. That's why colleagues introduce bills with tax credits, because they don't want to get on the floor and justify this versus putting money for the Guam Police Department, or for the school system, or for the hospital. Because if you're going to measure this, Because if you're going to measure this, they're going to say, we'd like this, but, you know, we got to take care of these critical needs in the government of Guam. So that's the reservation and concern I have. Otherwise, I wish, I would like to see a better means that we can bring this together, so that we can at least begin the process to assist. The issue of Eagles Field, to me, I don't support having the facility there. Decisions seem to be made without our involvement or engagement, but I would not want to see it there for a whole bunch of reasons, including, in fact, I don't even know if we can afford it. Building is one thing, you know, as you see, maintaining it long-term and sustaining long-term is the challenge. So I just bring up that concern. I don't have any questions for any of you. I think you've advocated your case very clearly. I appreciate the support and the investment that you individually personally have made to bring things to where they're at. It's just, you know, looking at the landscape right now, I'm a little concerned about where we're heading, and I'm a little more cautious on how we spend the people's money, because it's the people, it's not our money. I mean, we like to make it seem like we are giving you this, and we're not. We're taking your money, and we're giving it back. It's not ours, it's not coming out of our pocket. So I'm a little more conservative and concerned in how we spend it, and if there is a way we can do it, that would could get, maybe get you started, but not at this figure of 2 million at the top, maybe that's something I might be more open to. But I'm just relaying what the reservations are with how I see the fiscal landscape of the government, and I want to make sure we can take care of the most, I'm not here to take care of everything, but I want to take care of the most critical needs that our people have out there, and there's no alternative. The federal money dries up, and it will drive up, dry up, and it is drying up. How are we going to fund the operations of the critical needs? So I appreciate, again, your testimony, I hear it, I understand exactly what you are relaying, and I appreciate the work that you do. But I also wanted to let you know what my concerns are with regards to, not just a question of funding your particular organizations with this, but any other funding outside of what we would look at as the most critical needs of our government. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. For the panel, straight up, I'm in support of the bill. Number two, I'm familiar with Eagles, I'm familiar with Sycrode, and I'm familiar with Dedidu, because I'm from Dedidu. Okay, I'm familiar with House Field, very much, very familiar. My concern is, number one, or just make some clarification, or clarity, when tax credits are given, when budgets are put together, as far as I'm concerned, for the past four years, we reduce what's available to be appropriated. So it's not, it's not part of the package, it's taken off. So whatever's decided on the floor is what's available, okay? That's how it works. And with that note, I have, this is, this is no different than the Harmon Industrial Park. If there's nothing saying continuation, when the time comes, you come back to the legislation, you ask if you can continue to use the tax rate, and then we move on from there. So with that note, I ask Senator Mullen to ask his questions and give his closing remarks, and then we'll wrap it up for this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel. Mel, for GITA, appreciate all these, the comments to strengthen the bill. That can easily be worked on, it's very insightful, and it strengthens it.
Panel, your explanation was excellent on the conditions of the field and what we need to do. Talking about the history of the football fields and the ones that we need to develop, it's very helpful, so that we can understand how we can help the kids move forward in this growing sport, as you explained. And it's been over years and years, and 20 years, and even further, to when Mr. House Roma was around too, trying to get these things done, right? And because of that inspiration and what, how far they've taken this, is that's why we're here today. And now this is, I believe the tax credit program, the public-private partnership, is the way to go. It has worked, it has worked, as you've seen in the Harmon Industrial Road, works in schools, it works in many things, right? And the government has continued to grow since we've had these public-private partnerships, since we've had these tax credit programs, and we will continue to grow too. And the only way we can do that is to ensure that our youth are ready to become our next leaders, and that's where you folks are really helping us out to do that. There is nothing wrong with a tax credit program, there is nothing wrong with public-private partnerships. It's been too long since we addressed the conditions of these fields, which volunteers have been trying so hard to maintain, and the government hasn't been there to help them. This is one proposal, there's going to be others probably, we're going to strengthen this bill, and we're going to get it passed. I'm pleased to say that, I'm glad we have, we have this opportunity to have you before us, to explain that to us. We'll do our best here and get this on session floor, and get it going, so that you folks can have the right facilities for your, for your kids, and the parents can feel safe. So I thank you so much for this opportunity, and for you all sharing your knowledge with us today. Thank you, thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, for providing feedback and suggestion. Bill 332-36 Ellis is duly heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 9:56. Situism, please be safe. Play football, play it hard. Thank you. Have a nice day.